Call to the order, regular Gilbert City Council meeting on eight twenty-seven twenty-four at six P. M. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 All right, we'll close down. Determine a quorum, let's rise for the pledge of allegiance. Go ahead, Jeremy.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You put me on the spot there. I should have told you. Approved additions and deletions, I don't think there is any, right?
I'd like to add one thing, we have a four-wheel drive group, Minnesota Four Wheel Drive Association, like to have a convention here next spring, just like to add on the new business if we can approve them.
E? Under E then?
Yep.
Okay.
What's the name of the group, Mike?
Minnesota Four Wheel Drive Association, want to have their annual convention.
Sounds like a good idea. All right, so with that addition, do I have a motion?
Move.
Moved by Mark, support.
Support.
Support by Jeremy. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Motion carries four to zero. Next up, consent agenda. We have a motion by Mark. Support.
What was, what was the motion?
I'm making a motion to consent agenda.
Oh, yeah. Okay, I'll second it.
Supported by Bob. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Motion carries four to zero. All right, just like that, we're on public input. Anyone in the audience have anything they want to discuss or bring up?
Actually, I have a question.
Okay, go ahead. State your name, please.
I'm Ben, Spirit Fuel Company, actually live in Gilbert, too. Actually here for work. I was wondering if the city has any land that's for sale that would be for industrial purposes.
So, commercial?
Well, I looked in the zoning and I didn't see anything where it specifies for bulk or for fuel tank storage, so I need to build a bulk plant on the iron range. I had a plan, I had mountain iron, land picked out, but we, that's not going to work right now. So I need an alternative and I need some options, so I was wondering if Gilbert has anything. I know we have the, there's the, Como one has one on the other side of the highway, kind of by the bike trail. And I seen on Onyx, I think the city owned, they own a lot down in that area.
Mike, you want to go ahead?
You know, I would have to look into it and get back to you, but I do believe we have some potential sites that are zoning industrial. And I'm not intimately familiar with them, but I'd certainly willing to look into it and get back with you in the next week.
Now, we, that would be industrial, because I didn't see anything in commercial where it prohibits fuel tanks or prohibits like a fueling station, but I'm going to assume industrial.
Do you have an idea what, what space you're looking for, like how many feet or acres or?
If I could get three, I mean, I got a, I got about two million dollars worth of stuff I got to find a home for, so.
Something similar to what Como has or?
Similar, yeah. Almost identical, I got a, I got a couple different options, I got to see what the alternatives are, because we, we had a whole series of stuff lined up. So it could go a couple different ways, maybe just the tanks, maybe just, but I do want to build an office with a shop and stuff, too, for my trucks to run out of. So it all depends on the space permitted and what we can do with it, depends on how I'm going to build it.
Yeah, give me some time to look and I'll let you know in a week.
Perfect.
I guess.
Go ahead.
Do you, do we want direction from us to work, to have you work with him, or do you need it even?
I don't think. I don't think it's necessary at this point. If he's.
Not at this.
Has future interest and you decide to move forward, then we'd get a proposal together and see if you want to approve it or not, but at this point, it's just informational.
What about the, the land that the Dollar General is going to go after? Is that still?
That's a possibility.
Okay.
So that's one, I was thinking about, I think there's another site on the other end of town where there used to be a building, a couple different sites. I'm just not familiar with enough to, I'd just be guessing.
Right, okay. Well, you work with Mike on that and he'll come back to us with results on that. Anything else?
Just that.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Apologize for interrupting you, I don't think we did your payment bills, I think we need that.
That's the consent agenda.
That's under the consent agenda. You're good.
No worries.
No more public input? All right. Moving on. Reports from mayor and council, I guess I really don't have anything, I appreciate you guys, your patience as me filling in as our interim mayor. I know I screw things up once in a while, so just bear with me as we get through this and Tom will be back for the next meeting. Thank you. Bob, do you have anything?
I don't have anything tonight, no.
I don't have anything tonight either, Tom.
Jeremy?
I've got one thing, only because we were talking about it a little bit ago. The old police station, cement walls, paint, I know we talked about it before.
Yeah.
And did we move forward on getting quotes for anything for window replacement, door replacement? I don't remember.
Sam's not here tonight.
Sam will do that, but he, I don't think he's done anything with that.
If you want, I can work with Sam to do that.
Yeah, why don't you check with Sam and see what, what happened with that?
Because I agree that it, it needs painted, it needs an upgrade there.
All right, you got anything else?
That's it, thank you.
All right, thank you. Moving on to reports, staff boards and commissions, fire chief, you're up.
Evening, guys. Quick update of the fire department and then one request. We're sitting at twenty-two members right now, seventeen of them are fully qualified, three of them just need a live burn. That's kind of been on hold, looking for a house through the burn, so hopefully that comes up pretty quick. And two, our newest two are going to start training here in the fall, class opens up. We've been doing a lot of training in Evol schools, started in high school until they tore that down and last two weeks ago, we were in the elementary and we're headed back there tomorrow with some great training, ladder operations, we were laddering the third story of the, of the school with guys going up and doing rescues inside, a lot of door breach, banging through walls, climbing through, so that's been really fun. We've been working with Vale and Evol on, on that. It's coming to an end pretty soon, they're going to be tearing it down shortly, so we're going to try to get in there as much as we can. It's been a busy year, just before this meeting, we were on our forty-fifth call of the year. I think the most we've ever had was sixty-two, if I remember right, Jeremy. So we still got four months to go, so we're going to surpass that by far, I think. One last, one thing, we did not get the DNR grant that I came for approval for, that's usually something you get every other year, and we did get it last year. We budgeted twenty-five hundred for that grant, so we have that in there, which leads me to my request. Ladder twenty-three, as you all know, we had a little problem with that after the first pump test, seventeen days out of warranty, blew a hose and that is fixed. And McQueen did step up to the plate and covered all that, so there's no charge to the city on that. But we did discover some leaking out of our discharge, four-inch discharge and two-and-a-half inch discharge, and in your packet you'll see, you'll see a quotation for parts and service on that. Pat from McQueen did go to bat, went after Akron Ford, Akron's original OEM of the pumps and they will not cover it. So we are stuck with that. I did do some checking around local departments, local chiefs, and everyone's kind of in the same boat on that, they're having the same problems and it don't matter whether it's a Pierce or Rosenbauer or what. I did find out that they're getting more life out of them by going to a dry pump, so after every use, we come back, we open the valves and empty the pump out, so they dry out. They're getting two, three years longer is what I'm finding out, so. So you can see the total bill is twenty-one sixty-two and thirty-six cents for that, I figure we can use that money out of DNR grant that I budgeted to cover that, if you guys approve of that.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve the purchase?
Is that both of them, you have two estimates in here?
Yeah, ones, ones include, the fives included, if you look on the second page there in the middle, it's included into that, so it comes to twenty-one sixty-two, thirty-six So add that five hundred to the subtotal of the sixteen twenty-seven on that next page.
Okay.
Oh, I get it.
I'll make a motion then for two thousand one hundred and sixty-two dollars and thirty-six cents.
Got a motion on the table from Jeremy, do I have support here?
Support.
Support from Mark. Any other discussion?
Was that budgeted money, Mark? Did you have some extra money for that?
I budgeted for that DNR grant at twenty-five hundred, but we didn't get it, so that I figure we could use that. But I do, in miscellaneous, or repairs and miss, repairs and maintenance, we budget ten grand a year for repairs like this, too. That's been, there's, there's, there's money in there.
Okay.
We're not going to go over the budget.
It's a matching funds grant.
Yeah.
So if you have twenty-five hundred, that we didn't have the ability to spend to match funds with the DNR.
I see, you're going to use it for these repairs.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
One, one thing, did any of the other departments talk about Elkhart valves rather than Akron?
They may have.
Most of our other star, older stuff had Elkhart.
Okay, I'll look into that, I'll talk to Anthony about it.
It may not be worth even looking into, but I thought maybe somebody would.
Yeah.
All right, so we got a motion, support on the table, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Motion carries four to zero.
Who seconded that?
Mark.
Anything else, chief?
Yeah, but Jeremy interrupted me and I forgot already.
You're welcome.
Next time. Couldn't have been too important. Oh, actually, actually I do remember. I just wanted to give you an update on, on the FEMA grant, they've been putting out winners of, of the grant every Friday and as of last Friday, we still have not been awarded that. They're not, I think they're getting close to halfway done, so we still have a chance at that FEMA grant, so keep, keep your fingers crossed, that'd be a big one, so.
We're due.
We're due.
How much would the FEMA grant be if you got it?
Hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars, I believe. It would have costed us six thousand bucks, that would have been for fifteen SCBA, SCBAs and, and an extra tank and a mask with that.
SCBAs, where are those?
Self-contained breathing apparatus.
Oh, okay.
Your air mask.
Yeah. So, other than that, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't think so.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
I do have one last question, any applications for new members?
Actually, I made a phone call today, we're going to be getting one here shortly. Mark wants to retire, so I've not been letting him.
I kind of figured that was coming.
So, all right, thank yous.
All right, thank you. Moving on to city attorney, Colleen.
Yes, good evening, you're here, so. I just wanted to report that on the ATV trail, the DNR grant, the DNR process, we had to do that parcel split, I believe we spoke about it last time. When I was here, I talked to Brian this afternoon, he indicated that the parcel split packet had gone in and submitted to the county, we're just waiting for the deans back, the stamp on it, sending stuff, so.
Okay.
Provided out later, so it's my guess.
Perfect, thank you. Anything else?
No, do you want me to get to the flag, sit you or?
I think we'll just do on the new business. Thank you. Chief, Ty Teacher.
Good evening, mayor, council. The only thing I have this evening is, as you're aware, FEMA's been in the area doing assessments and stuff like that. They have been making payments, I just found today that one, one household in town here received just over seven thousand dollars for damages from the floods, so we encourage anybody who did receive any flood damage, it is worth putting, putting a claim in because they're cutting checks relatively quickly, so we certainly are encouraging that for the private residences.
Right.
The stuff for the, for the city, that'll be a little bit further down the road here, but for houses that have received any water damage, file a claim because they've been writing checks and it doesn't sound like they've been fighting a whole lot, so.
Okay, and that's amazingly fast.
I was very surprised, yep, yep. Yeah, within two weeks, they're, they're sending some checks.
Does it visit the residents then or?
Yeah, they'll send somebody out and they'll do kind of a quick assessment. I haven't heard of anybody that has been like filing a grievance or challenging what they're giving, I think people are just happy to get something, but I don't want to necessarily discourage or encourage, but I would imagine that if they say this is how much you can get, I don't know if you were to file some type of grievance, if you could potentially get more, but, but they've been writing checks relatively quick, from my understanding, so.
And I believe they're hosting that right at the county building, right?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Is that where somebody would go then?
Yep, yep, any business owner or private residence. And it doesn't matter how minor it is, if you've got a road that's washed out, submit something, they might, there's a chance that they'll cut you a check for five hundred dollars for a class five. So, you know, we really want to file, then in some ways, the more filings that we have, the better, because then it really shows the need, so there's not just a certain amount of money put aside, so there's money there for each case, for every case, so.
Anyone got any questions for Ty?
Have they come up with, or said anything about what the city's moved forward with or submitted?
I'm not entirely sure, but I was trying to get that answer next council meeting, but I know that was going to be the big pot of money that was supposed to be pushed up, so I'm not sure when that's going to be made available, I really don't know, so.
Okay, that will probably take a little long.
But I know we are eligible for it, I know because it was, Gilbert was identified as one of the major spots, so I think we were like number four on the list for, for it, so.
All right, anything else, Ty?
Thanks for all your help on that.
Yeah. Nice to see you got away for a little bit, too, even though it didn't turn out in your favor.
All right.
Sam's gone today?
Yeah.
All right, moving on. City engineer's not here either. Campground host, Wendy.
Good evening, everyone. I don't have a lot to report, I have, you know, both campground this weekend, of course, and I look forward to the coming September being maybe a little slower. It's been a very busy, busy summer, but as far as Rock Ranch goes in October, we opened the Overpool.
Yep.
And I've got twelve side story book for that, so.
Nice.
It was a good thing to do and I thank you for that.
Good.
I guess the other thing I wanted to mention is that I would love to come back next year if you're willing to add me, so if you would look at that and I really would like to know for sure before I leave.
Okay.
If I'm ready back, so if we can do something with that, I would appreciate it.
All right, we'll, we'll have to discuss that with Mike and then Tom will be back, so he'll can figure that out.
Okay, all right, that's it, thank you.
So I do have a question about that, when do you typically leave?
We're leaving October eighth.
So we have a concrete, you know, date in mind.
Yeah, the campground closes on the sixth and I take a day to, a day or day and a half to clean up and, and get things put away and then we, for one or whatever.
Okay.
Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you. Library director's not here. No advisory boards. Interim clerk, anything?
We were given an additional, maybe eighteen thousand dollars for O H V trail maintenance, just a point of notification, so all the washouts and things of the moment.
Yeah, all right. Anyone got any questions from Mike? Moving on. We don't have anything on our old business, right? All right, on to new business, the S C H meeting with M P C A wastewater and boat
It was really an update that I gave at our planning session, but basically we're pulling together a couple of different proposals to apply for that grant.
Yep.
And when they do, we'll look forward to it, so.
Okay.
Make sure everybody knew both meetings in case you weren't here.
All right, sounds good. Anyone ask any questions about that? All right, moving on to the Minnesota state flag. Colleen, do you want to talk about that or?
Guys, we're all knowing that the Minnesota state flag, the official flag, was changed on statehood date, May eleventh, twenty twenty-four this year. I understand from the council that there's been some question about whether we're allowed to fly the old official flag, and we're not. We're not required to fly, fly any state flags anywhere, we aren't a state, we aren't state agencies, state institutions, so again, to the question of whether what we do, the options for the counselor, then you fly the new flag you ordered, you get it up, and I think there's two spots.
Yeah.
Fly flags for the state, otherwise pull them down and then you can keep the old flags as like historic value with memorabilia that you have on the city, that kind of thing. It's not really an option not to, so.
Okay.
And I know some states are, some cities I've read the paper are resisting it, you know, but it's really, this is the official flag, so.
So I'll, I'll touch on that, as I've gotten complaints about, you know, everything's been changing, this is not the world we all grew up in, so I've gotten complaints about removing that state flag from our city as we do not, are not required to fly it, so I've been asked for someone to maybe, to take a vote to either remove it or leave it up, so I'm going to put it on the table for, someone wanted to make a motion to remove the new state flag and leave, and then obviously not, put nothing up to replace it as the statute states. So do I have a motion to remove the new state flag from city property? There's two of them that I know of.
Not for me.
I'm not sure, is it, is it, are we protesting if we remove it and, you know, what point are we trying to make? I'm not quite sure.
Yeah, it could be perceived any which way, you know, it's just the, all I can tell you, council, is you can't fly the old one, you can choose not to fly it. I agree there are messages sent either which way, right? You know, decisions, what you think is the best in just this city.
My two cents worth. I don't care for the new flag, I prefer, I like the old flag, but that is our new state flag, so I'm, I'm not partial or not, either way, if we fly it or not.
Right.
I told you, I abstain.
Yeah.
So I'll counter with this, you've had complaints about the new flag, I have friends that live right in town that are already flying the new flag, so I've, I've gotten feedback, mostly in a positive light, about our new flag and I'm in, well, if there's no motion, I'll just stop talking.
Yeah, I guess, I guess I won't motion either unless there's a lot of complaints later on that we hear, you know.
I don't know what the end game would be, there's, there's no, what's your point of, of not flying it? Boy, that'll stick to.
Well, that's like a protest.
I don't know, but there's, there's no, there's no win.
Right.
Okay.
You don't fly their flag and then you protest them for me, I don't know.
Mayor, council, if I can, I mentioned something else, too. January first of twenty twenty-five, we also have, have to have all of our state seals changed, that's going to cost several hundred dollars. Every one of our badges has the state seal built within, in it, so we have to replace, our badges are a hundred and fifty dollars a piece, however, we can break these off and we're going to try to glue different ones on to meet state statute. All of our squad cars are going to have to be removed, have to remove all of our badges off our squad cars and put new ones on, trying to work on some pricing. I know Hennepin County Sheriff's Office is going to cost five hundred thousand dollars just to change over their squad cars.
Is there a grandfathered in period of?
We are supposed to make every effort possible to change it. I think, I don't know if we can claim financial hardship, it'll be, I'm anticipating over a thousand dollars for our agency to change our state seals, all of our, our notaries, we have to get all new notary stamps for employees, so everything's got, everything has to be redesigned and changed for us, so there's a little bit of a cost there, I, I've kind of been bucking it a little bit, because I don't think people are going to notice, but I know people are going to notice, so, but that's something we have to look at, it's thousands of dollars, a thousand dollars, and that's not something that we normally have in our budget, you know, so.
And the government's not going to cover any of it.
There'll be no reimbursement, no, but, but we're in the same boat, you know, a lot of the law, a lot of the other chiefs have talked to, there's, there's some concerns because the badges are the biggest thing, they think it's going to cost us probably fifty dollars a piece per badge to fix them, and we have to make the changes and there's two badges per officer, so there's fourteen there, so it's, you know.
So how spanky is that add-on addition change rather than just getting a new badge?
Well, a hundred and fifty, around fifty dollars compared to a hundred and fifty, I think we just put new ones, just break them off.
It's not like you're buying a seventy.
And re-gloom, no, but.
Still, they got us to squad cars and everything.
Still money, so.
No, I get it, but.
But.
If it's going to be a cheesy, falling apart in two years anyway.
Now, Gorilla Glue works pretty well, so we'll see, we'll see how well it works.
I think, Mike, what we'll do is we'll just table this till the next meeting, because I know Tom had some input on it, so I'll just make it fair and do that, so. Moving on to the I triple R B resolution.
You have to move the table, Tom?
Yeah, I think you have to have a motion to table.
Yeah, we need a motion to table.
All right, do I have a motion to table the state flag discussion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Bob, support?
I'll support it.
Supported by Jeremy, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay.
Nay.
Motion passes three to one with nay would be Mark.
I'd like to add on that, if, if there, if there's a lot of people in the community that are against that flag or us flying it, they'd rather not see it, actually come down and speak or, or talk to some one of us and, and actually say something.
Or if you.
I haven't heard any complaints about it, so.
Or if you want to go a different route, do a petition and signatures or whatever and we'll discuss it then. So we'll move on to the I triple R B resolution.
That's a resolution we have to pass to set the million.
Move.
Move by Mark, support?
I'll support.
Support by Jeremy. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Motion carries four to zero.
Maybe you should tell the public what we got, though. Inform the public what that was all about.
Through the state bonding process that really was directed towards mining money, not the general fund from the state, the city of Gilbert was awarded a million dollars to update our community center or build a new community center. So if you wanted to build a new one, you'd probably get a small pole barn and if you want to update this one, it's a pretty significant amount of money, we probably will have to spend a large share of it on the heating system, but then there'll be additional monies left over to upgrade other things in the building. We'll just have to start budgeting it out and I believe I have to have a preliminary budget numbers back to the I triple R B by the end of August, so.
All right.
That's where we're at. Passing a resolution, when you accept money, that's pretty normal to have to do and there are no matching funds on this, it's a hundred percent free and clear and we have quite a bit of flexibility on how to spend it, so it should be real positive for the community.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Yep, go ahead.
One other thing to go with that, I guess, I just kind of want to put it out there that the heating system and there would be air conditioning in there, is what you're looking at.
Correct.
And it would be zoned more for efficiency and really being able to use that building in the summer or in the winter, for that matter, so, which has always been.
It's always costing.
Right.
Window units hanging out all winter, hanging out all summer.
Right.
It's going to be a pretty easy upgrade in some of the areas, there'll be some challenges, but overall, it's pretty easy to make the changes. I think the biggest thing we're concerned about is demolition costs of taking out all the existing piping and radiators, we're projecting around a hundred thousand, but it could be more, you know, if there's. You know, if there's asbestos insulation on the pipes, it could add up more quickly. But Sam informed me that a lot of that insulation had been changed over several years ago, so it shouldn't be a major factor.
All right, great. Anything, anyone add anything on that? Miscellaneous, I think we just move on from that and go to the four-wheeler event?
We were, have a request from Jeff Went, who's the president of the Minnesota Four Wheel Drive Association. Every four or five years, they have an annual convention. They would like to have it here on May 3rd. They'd like to rent the ice arena. I believe we charge them 500 dollars for that. They'd also like to have additional camping spots opened up with our overflow. And I believe they've talked to Wendy already and would like to rent the entire campground. So this would be next May 3rd. I'd like a motion to approve them to use those dates and then to allow me to fill out any paperwork or things necessary to close the loop on the deal.
When do we usually open that campground? Kinda early, isn't it?
I think it opens.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead, Paul.
So first of all, I am, in addition to having a campground, I am a member of Minnesota Four Wheel Drive Association. This is their annual spring convention. It is on a three-year cycle that it comes to Gilbert. They have been here several times before. They will absolutely fill both campgrounds. The only concern with overflow, I agree that it would be a good use for the overflow spot because it will have just as many people as, say, Crawl for the Cure, so it would be a good use of that. But I think it would be in the best interest of the city to kind of be a little bit cautious on that, given that where that overflow is, and if we have a late spring, we could have a very wet area where things could, and I, so if we're gonna think about opening that, think ahead now. Do we need to bring in dirt? Do we need to do anything to make sure that it's gonna be a stable place for people to camp in in the springtime? That's been, behind the ball fields has been kind of an interesting area, even as we've gotten into Crawl for the Cure, which is a much drier time of the year. So that should be something that we should talk to Sam about, think about in advance, so that we're prepared for it. But overall, the event, it's a three, it's a, well, they come in on Friday and they leave on Sunday. They rent the arena for, you know, trade show vendors and things like that. They have their banquet and stuff like that. Very similar to the setup for the Crawl for the Cure. So it does bring a lot of people to town. I think it's great that we're starting to work on it early. That does help with some of these big events. And so I'm free to sit down with Mike and give any additional information for helping to prepare, but it is absolutely a good thing to bring, to bring this group into town.
All right, sounds good. Thank you for your input.
Bob, Joe, Dirk, is that where the Sammy piles all the snow all winter long?
Behind the big field. You know, the big field behind there is where, there's been some overflow. I don't know, I haven't been there. Where was the issue of most of the overflow?
It was the area behind the ball field. That's the A section of the overflow, that's the, it's got 25 sites, I think.
So that's his primary winter snow pile, right?
Yeah, there's, he puts quite a bit there on the snowy area, yeah.
And we got lucky last year, we didn't have any.
Yeah, I don't think we're gonna get that lucky this year.
It's what could be saturated.
So it might be prudent to.
And you're right.
It's a good point, Mark, that we might want to put our snow somewhere, you know, that.
Yeah.
We have to come here.
Or think about that parking lot, that paved parking lot up there, that you don't have a problem.
Yeah. If, you know, maybe if Sam can use the old Gillespie lot for snow this year, or if there's other areas, if we can minimize the amount of snow that accumulates there, that might help with the runoff.
Oh, 100%, that's a, that's a lot of snow to get rid of by May 3rd.
Yeah.
But for a backup, you might wanna consider the, you know, by delta, the parking lots like you had in mind at one point.
Yep.
Because then you know it's gonna be dry, because it's paved.
So I think we should.
For a backup.
If we're gonna make a motion, we should just make a motion to approve you to allow them to have the event, and then all the details be figured out as it gets closer.
Yep.
It's hard in Minnesota to figure out what we're gonna get, so.
Just including, you know, mentioning to Sam that, you know, if you can minimize any of that snow that you put there, it might be helpful for the springtime thought.
I've got one. Wendy, are they making reservations now for that?
No, no. They requested that I block off the campground.
Okay.
Just that much I can do now.
Okay.
And then I won't take reservations for it until, they have to sign up for the event before they can sign up to get a site, just like Crawl for the Cure.
Okay.
So once they sign up for the event, they'll get the code to call or go online to reserve a site.
So if we make a motion to move forward with this, we wanna add the overflow in with this also? But that, that could be subject to moving, I guess, spots?
We need to add the overflow, it's part of what the motion we'd like to see. But I think you've given us the idea that we need to do whatever's necessary to make sure that's gonna work out.
Just so they understand that, yeah, this is where we've normally had it, like Paul said, we normally had it there, but unforeseen weather, snow piles up to the sky could be.
And in the interim, I will talk to Sam and see if there's other locations that are possible, too. So be nice to have a Plan A and Plan B based on the weather, you know.
Oh, I think Minnesota's gonna have a plan for us, but.
So there won't be any reservations taken for the camping till after that weekend? Because they're gonna book the whole thing.
January 1? Oh, I see.
You won't open it until the 4th or whatever, for when they're camping.
I have seasonals coming in. My seasonals will come in on the 1st, like usual.
Yeah, they can do reservations. Yeah, they can do reservations all winter long.
No, but I'm saying, if they're gonna book the whole campground, you can't really open the campground until they're done, so that Monday, then the regular campers could come in.
No, the seasonal sites are still reserved for them, so.
Oh.
Regardless, right?
Okay.
Right.
So then it's kind of limiting booking the entire campground, because there's already sites taken.
Yeah.
So it's actually a misnomer calling it the entire campground. It's the entire campground minus the seasonals.
So do we have a motion to approve the event with sub-changes for the overflow?
I'll make a motion.
Support. Motion by Jeremy, supported by Mark.
Also includes the use of the arena.
Yes. All right. We have any more discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries 4 to 0. I believe we don't have any miscellaneous, right? All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn the regular council meeting? Moved by Mark, support?
Support.
Support by Bob. Discussion, nope. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carries 4 to 0. Meeting is adjourned at 6:38 PM.